Nice meeting. Quick man, is that what you say?
Quick.
Game three.
Who's playing?
Sox and Tinsel.
I don't see nothing. Jumping the gun on the ledge there.
Oh, that one on.
It's not gonna be quick.
You have to get rid of these?
Well, that makes it so much easier to read stuff.
Yeah, this is a little bit too dark, you know?
You gotta clip all this out, right, before you post it?
Right.
That's nice. Oh, perfect.
No, that's a lot. I like it. Dimmer lights are better. I know, I've got old eyes too, so I sympathize with you. That's the best.
Doing something wacky.
He'll be on camera too.
I want to make sure my phone's turned all the way down, can you imagine?
So we've got a couple more minutes? Are you ready, Lisa? Okay.
Sorry, Jim.
You're gonna fix this room, right?
Yeah.
You hope so.
But that $65,000 is...
All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and I'd like to open the meeting for Monday, October 7, 2013. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'll just run through the agenda here. We have, we're gonna go through and read mail. At 7:10, we have public input and member updates. At 7:15, we have a couple of requests, one from the Littleton 300th Committee, and a request to waive the street opening moratorium. At 7:30, we'll discuss the special town meeting articles. At 8:30, Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget will provide us with updates on the, will review the financial policy amendments, and we'll look at an interministerial agreement on regional housing services. At 8:45, we're scheduled to look at a conflict of interest law and special municipal employees, and we're gonna start a review of the selectmen's rules and regulations. At 9 o'clock, we have other business, consent agenda, and minutes. That doesn't mean we can't move through these and be done much before 9 o'clock. So with that, Keith?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a few things that we received. First, the Governor had declared yesterday as National Fall and Firefighters Memorial Service, and the flags were in the order that have staff for that yesterday. We have an update from Jim Clyde on a site visit made on Thursday. The Mass DOT in response to a request, a series of questions that the Board had posed this summer, which Selectman Brownson inquired about the status of, that we were actually able to get some employees from Mass DOT out to look at the intersection signals in Littleton Common, and maybe Jim could just give us a quick update on.
How many times you gone through the story?
No. But it's good news.
Mass DOT was very receptive to come out to meet with us and did some preliminary work before they got there. Bottom line is, we're, it sounds like they're going to install the turn lanes and do some reconfiguring of the lanes at the common, but they're gonna put it on a plan and send it to us so that it can get approved if we like it. Deputy Chief King has gone up for a couple of days during the peak traffic to see, you know, how it actually worked and stuff like that, to see if this would work for us. Because Mass DOT puts the intersection into a computer program. The computer program says what we wanna do won't work. But they said feet on the ground understands better how it goes through the intersection, and they feel that we have a good handle on it, and it will be better than what's there and safe.
Okay.
Just one question for you, Jim. I know when that intersection first got done, they had taken some parking spots away on the right-hand side, and then they reconfigured it. Remember how they had done it? Is that gonna go back to?
No, everything that's on the, I guess I'll call it the sub-chaos side is gonna stay.
Well, good.
The lane that you take to turn would be a dedicated left turn lane, and then they're gonna take one lane away on the mobile station side, and they get three lanes coming from west side of Littleton. It'll be one lane outside.
Perfect. But they got it, but certainly by the time the point is up and operating, beginning next year, it wouldn't be that much more important to be able to take a left turn and off of King Street in the direction of the point, so.
Another point of interest, that a couple people noted that the pedestrian sign work is coming on when no pedestrians are there. So we mentioned it to them while they were there, and that afternoon, they had a maintenance guy looking at it. So they're taking what we say is serious and pretty responsible.
Good.
Thank you.
Next item is a notice we received from the School Committee regarding a presentation that they are hosting, that's being hosted at the high school library this Thursday, October 10. It's a presentation by the Littleton Police Department on the alert lockdown and warm counter evacuate system. Acronym ALICE, which is, which will be the subject of the presentation there. And then lastly, we received a letter from the Oak Meadow School thanking the Board for its thoughtful approach to approaching medical marijuana cultivation issue.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll go to public input. Is there anything for the public today? Mr. McGyver.
Sure. Don McKenna, Route 43, Foster Street. I was going through the various agenda items, and I was concerned that here, I guess at this meeting, as I best understand it, you plan to recommend adopting, endorsing various warrant articles for the special town meeting. And I'm surprised to see one that really hadn't gotten much air. And when issues came up at last special town meeting, there was great concern about it, and it was talk about working on it until it was available the next annual town meeting. And that milestone penalty was missed, and all of a sudden we have before us, once again, a last-minute item. And this particular one is warrant article six, which is pretty far-reaching, involves three boards, including yours, trumps all past special town meeting votes, is for strategic funding in one direction and another. It's very convoluted, and it seems by your own rules, not really appropriate for a special town meeting, especially whereas the people affected with it haven't been involved or leased. So I guess I'm asking that it not be recommended at this point. You hold that back. But it should probably be pulled, you know? When things are put forth, there should be some planning, unless it's a critical urgency that you have no choice on. I mean, people, you know, local government, you expect to be more accountable, more grassroots, different from Congress. You expect not to be political battles. You expect people to work together. And there are different perceptions here, and one side, one whole section that's gonna be targeted. And I guess Sacrifice hasn't been involved at all, and it will be in the next couple of weeks. That's a little bit too late for having any influence, any creative directing solution for a problem. Yeah, it's just window dressing. So I request that you do not vote on warrant article six. That you, in fact, go to all those committees and groups involved with it, actually get a reading of how it would negatively impact things, especially on the conservation protection, whereas you know by a variety means we have 160 acres and great, great road that is at risk. We're trying to fund down the Newtown Hill to Durkey area. We have some 15 landowners we're working with. We've been doing this for a couple of years. People are ready to do conservation restrictions. And when that happens, that saves the town money on the long term. The hard part is the initial cost to put in protections. So, yeah, this is really where it gets all careful planning and financial planning of another group. And there's been no insight to that. I mean, this really should be pulled. This isn't what good government is about. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion and your thoughts. Anybody else? Mr. Delfry.
I wanted to bring up the questions I brought up on wording on article 10. Will that be more appropriate during the discussion?
Well, we already had one comment. Do you wanna, I mean, if you wanna get it in, go ahead. Go ahead now, on article 10.
Basically, if you look at the definition of the "retail sales",
Okay.
the wording says, and I quote, "Any use involving the sale or lease of newer used motor vehicles, per and which will include without limitation all varieties of automobiles, etc." Excuse me. The words "any use" doesn't say principal use, accessory use. It says "any use", and that is explicitly prohibited in retail and VC. Well, as I read "any use", if I handle for a sales sign on our old boat I'm trying to sell, isn't that, doesn't that fall under "any use"?
Okay. No, I recall your comment, Jerry, and I appreciate you bringing it up and your attention to it. But we can provide comment back to that when we get to it.
Well, what we told them, what we responded the last time is that those comments had been referred to the planning board. The article that's in the warrant is as the planning board submitted it, so it doesn't change. The planning board has their public hearing on October 17. They have that information there, and if there's any amendments to be made to the text of that article, it will need, it would come from the planning board, but they're, they've been in the loop. The questions that you posed, Town Council saw them as well, so.
I just had a comment.
Quickly.
Being on the planning board, this is a proposal that's coming late, and I have some concerns about things coming in late, as you've already heard.
So you can bring them up at your planning board?
Certainly. I'm just trying to evade some of the concerns.
Well, no.
One aspect deals with a near-term threat of having a large car dealership come upon as land comes available. That's high-risk, high-concern, urgency that I support. And then things got submitted, and someone's proposing, and it's got a little more elaborate, more so than I would support, because I don't think we have all the knowledge and information in the outreach with the community. My concerns with warrant article six as well. So I have mixed feelings, but there will be a public hearing coming out, and my focus is really looking at the most urgent, high-risk threat to the town. And the rest of it could be done later in a second phase.
Okay, so that's something that'll be addressed at the planning board on October, what'd you say? October what?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay.
Thursday.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I have a comment on article six. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, we'll keep going that way.
Bill Brown, 700 George Lane. I'm the Land Steward at Oak Hill. I just wanna say that the town has benefited from the self-talent funds, helping us get open space over the years. We've also benefited from having a very well-run, which will have an electric light and water department. But I find this article very complicated, and wonder why the same thing couldn't be accomplished by having the town rent the five acres by the landfill for a dollar a year to the water department so they could put up the photovoltaic and the other plant there, and then have that on a 10-year renewable cycle. And depending on the revenue stream and how things are working out, you might decide that the rent should be more than a dollar a year. But in any event, it seems like it would give the water department what they want, you know, a place to put the photovoltaics,
Right.
without having to pay rent to the town,
Yeah.
and also preserve the existing structure of having self-talent funding go to CPC.
Okay. We'll probably discuss that in length, so any other comments on article six? We should probably wait until then. This is gonna bump our agenda. But we'll be, I'm sure we'll be discussing that. I see Savas is here, and we'll be talking to that time. Something new, Jerry? Article six?
I just wanted to ask Savas a question.
Okay, let's get to article six. We'll get there.
Article six comes up during the proper time.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, anybody else? Anything? Article six, article four, anything?
I just wanna make sure that we speak at the right time. The Littleton Historical Commission, we have put in a request for a 2014 fiscal year budget increase, and I wanna make sure that the latest information we sent is here.
Yeah, Keith and I talked about that, so we know there's a change, and we can.
I sent in two or three or four changes.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we'll get to that. That's also on the tell-me warrant, so we'll take it up at that time. All right. All right, seeing nothing else. Board members, any updates? Alex?
No.
Joe?
Two things, once again, talking about the 300th anniversary. I was supposed to get information by computer from Cindy Napoli today, but it didn't come in. But two things, I mentioned it before. Coming up, there's a raffle going on for four premium seats to the Patriots game. There's only 400 tickets being sold, so you wanna talk to the friends with the 300th about that. And also, on the 9th of November at the Barksboro Holiday Inn, they're having a silent auction, a live auction, live music, and other kinds of entertainment for the benefit of the 300th anniversary, so.
What's the website where people can find more information?
Can we go to littleton300.org?
Littleton300.org, okay. All right, great. Jenna?
I have a couple of things. In addition to the intersection discussion that Jim and myself and Keith had with Mass Department of Transportation, Jim has also agreed to find a dedicated motorcycle moped parking space, which will have a marking on it that says it's just for seasonal use. So in the winter, cars can park there. So that's one, another item that we had on our selectmen's goals, which has been met. On Friday morning, I attended the Mass Municipal Association's Legislative Breakfast. I'm happy to share any of the things that I learned there with my fellow board members. On Saturday, I attended the Massachusetts Selectmen's Fall Conference, which was an all-day conference, and have glossy registration for the program in January, and invite my fellow selectmen to attend that with me. Tomorrow, Tuesday, at the library, Women in Agriculture is going to be highlighted. At 7 o'clock, there'll be women from town who are active growers, along with some visiting from out of town. And I checked with respect to the ALICE presentation that Keith Bergman mentioned. The presentation is 15 to 20 minutes, followed by questions, so it is not an all-night affair, if people are interested in learning more about that. It's open to parents, students, staff, and interested community members.
Jim, all set? And I'm all set. Go Sox. With that, we'll move on to item 3A, which is the Littleton 300th cake on the common, but let me clarify, I'm saying it's a wooden cake. And I'll turn that over to Joe, as I do for most things on the 300th on the common.
This is gonna write to Diane, this is about it.
Okay.
Hi, Diane Corrick, 74 King Street. I'm the chair for the opening closing committee. I'm the president tonight. And basically, we're here tonight, or on the way tonight, to request permission from the Board of Selectmen. We are having a six-foot cake being made through Chover Valley Technical High School, and we're requesting permission from the Board of Selectmen to place that on the common from the June 27 opening to the closing, which is September 27. And it will go on the, we're hoping to put it on the Meeting House Road side with your permission. I can have a look at you.
Yeah, I just, my only thing is make sure, you know, Jim and Elise, make sure it doesn't block any lines of sight, things like that. And that's the only concern I have, and I'm sure you had, I'm sure you already thought of those, so I, redundant and.
The response went out from Keith as well, asking for comments and vote Jim and Chief Kelly to ensure that there was always.
Great. Okay.
What kind of frosting?
Latex.
Mr. Horwath, anything?
Not to add to that, I'll talk about the radical.
Okay.
Motion?
Sure.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the request of the Littleton 300th Celebration Opening-Closing Subcommittee to place on the Meeting House, Rhode Island, a portion of Littleton Common during the 2014 celebration year, a six-foot-high wooden cake to be created by the Neshova Valley Tech High School wood shop.
The movement's second is to approve a wooden cake on the Littleton Common during 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a street opening permit, a waiver request for gas service on Ten Crane Road. Keith, I'll give the background here, and you and Jim can fill me in. But basically, in 2011, the Board of Selectmen voted to have a moratorium on cutting road surfaces, any within five years of that road being completed. There's a detailed policy here, and it's the Amendments to Littleton Highway Department's Street Opening Regulations. And specifically, one point here says, "Cutting of road surfaces five years old or newer will not be allowed." And then there is an exception listed, which is emergency repair to utilities. And there is somebody here tonight to request a waiver. I will go to them, Keith or Jim, unless you have something. Oh, this is, Jim, I believe you recommended not allowing this. Is that right, from your, okay. Keith, do you have anything to add before I go to the applicant?
The only issue was, it's definitely a policy issue for the Board to decide at the time. My recollection of when the policy was adopted in January of 2011, we certainly knew that we just completed work on a number of roads and spent a lot of money, and we needed to codify the intent to not have them dug up soon after having just reconstructed them. So that in this particular case, we're aware that the road, Crane Road, was completed prior August. It was completed in August of 2010. We adopted your policy in January of 2011. So I think what you need to be clear about is whether your intent was or is to have that apply on projects, all projects that were completed at that time, or only projects that were completed after that date.
Well, my thoughts on that, and I was, I didn't know if I wanted to go through that before we go to the applicant, but we probably should get the Board's understanding of that. It says, "Cutting of road surfaces five years old or newer." It doesn't say from this date forward, and this is an engineering practice. So whether the road has been in town, been down for two and a half years, or it's gonna be put down next year, the policy is there for a reason, to make sure these roads are maintained and that the town's investment is maintained. So in my opinion, is that this does not, this applies to all new roads based on how this Restoration Guidelines, and I don't know if any of the board members have any thoughts on it.
I think before we discuss this any further, we should hear from the applicant and hear what his particular set of circumstances are, and save our opinions for later in the discussion.
I understand that. I am asking now for the Board's thoughts on whether or not this applies now, whether it applies to all roads or to just roads completed after this policy was adopted.
There's no language in here that says that it's been, you know, roads built prior to January 10, 2011 are grandfathered.
Right.
So I would agree with you in your assessment of the policy being any road five years or younger, regardless of when it was put down.
I can agree with that.
Okay. Joe, do you have a thought? All right, so we have a general consensus of the selectmen that this policy pertains to all roads, and there's no grandfathered roads in there. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant.
Hi, thanks. So, yeah, I guess first off, I had read the policy, and I didn't see anything about grandfathering. Do you have a copy?
Right here, yes.
Yeah, do you mind if I take a look? Thanks. Where's the grandfather clause?
There's no grandfather.
It's right here.
Yeah, right, where's the statement of?
Right here, commencing work and restoration guidelines, so page three, right in the middle of the page.
All right, thanks. I had, Keith, I have whatever you sent me.
Yes.
Is that the same?
Yep.
Okay. So the, it definitely says, no cutting of roads five years or newer. It also says, though, I didn't hear you mention that there's also an allowance for case-by-case review.
But where do you see that?
Is that right?
No, I see, I say, I'm only reading that first line, which says, "Exception for emergency repairs to utilities." I don't see, if you point something else out to me, I didn't memorize it. Do you see it somewhere? If you recall it, I'd like to see where you saw it.
Yeah, I'm looking at, again, I had what Keith sent me, which doesn't look like it.
Yeah, the language says, "Exception, emergency repairs to utilities," close quote.
Okay, I have what you sent me here, so I'm reading off of, apparently, I don't know. Do you wanna look at this, Keith, and see what you sent? Littleton Street Opening Moratorium Waiver. Oh, that's what I, I have the waiver, not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so the waiver states, I don't know if this is relevant, maybe you guys can help, but the waiver states that it's allowable on a case-by-case basis.
So I think that's why we're here.
Yeah.
That we're, that the policy, I think we're doing two things. One was getting a general understanding of whether the request that you're making is even subject to the policy. And I think there's a general consensus that, yes, it is subject, because even though Crane Road was reconstructed prior to the policy being adopted, nevertheless, it applies to Crane Road. Therefore, your relief is to get a waiver from the policy. The policy applies, so then the question is, can you, can the Board of Selectmen grant your relief? So that's why there's a waiver request.
Sorry, Jenna, can you show me? You said.
Oh, no, so this is absolutely what you saw, "public safety measure or on a case-by-case basis."
Yeah.
Here is the general policy adopted in January.
You made a comment about roads before 2010.
Right, correct. There's nothing written in this policy that says roads installed prior to this date will be grandfathered. So in essence, you're asking me to prove a negative. It's impossible for me to do that.
Okay, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought what you had said was that it explicitly said that there were some roads already considered to be not grandfathered. So I'm good now.
Oh, fine.
It does not say it.
It does not say that.
But that's why I'm here, or else it would have been clear.
Correct, because you're here based on the waiver.
The policy didn't apply in the rule, and we would have said that you can go ahead and credit because it doesn't.
So I think we're all on the same page. I thought you were pointing out something explicitly saying that I was a set of roads.
You're in the right place.
Yeah, so. On a case-by-case basis, I wanna know what's special about this case that we should be.
I would like something to clarify first, please, not to do with the applicant. The policy does not have the words that are on the waiver form, is that correct? "Littleton Board of Selectmen may waive the excavation moratorium if the work is necessary as a public safety measure or on a case-by-case basis if it can be shown that other just cause exists." All right, where did that wording come from?
I can't speak, I don't believe I was on the board at that time. You may have been there, so I don't know if the board approved the, the form or just the policy.
We don't, there was no form that was developed at the time.
But to give.
We developed it this, the past week, so that when we had a request, we'd have the form to fill out.
Okay. So Alex, did you find a statement somewhere else that you said you recall, or is that from the?
If, if we're.
In the, or did that, do you think that's the one you recalled?
My point is, is, you know, we have, we have the policy, and it, the policy doesn't contain this wording, but we also have a public document that's created for this person, and I'm trying to understand where that last paragraph came from and on what basis it exists.
I think it's just that maybe there is some compelling reason at some point, and I'd like to get back to the applicant and see if there is a compelling reason to cut that pavement at this point.
But it still doesn't answer the question, why do we have a policy in conflict with the form we're issuing to the public?
I can't speak to that, I didn't produce the form.
The form was developed by the Highway Department to have a reasonable standard that the board could consider.
What I've learned is.
To elicit information from the applicant would allow you.
What I've learned, the regulations is always an exception to every rule. Mr. Clyde, did you have something to add?
Basically, we hadn't had a waiver request prior to this.
Yeah.
So we did some research online with other towns and took what we felt was best for Littleton, and some of that wording came from other waiver requests.
Uh huh.
So.
Okay. I think there's always, I think there always needs to be an opportunity, I mean, you can't just lay down the law, there's always, there could all, there's always some, could be a compelling reason to waive something, that's why there's waiver for every regulation and.
And since we didn't have.
Rule that I haven't dealt with.
We didn't have a form to elicit any level of information that would be needed for you to make a decision, so we created a form. That's, I don't think it's inconsistent, I don't think the form is inconsistent with your policy.
Yeah.
Because you still get to make a decision based on your policy.
Okay.
Thanks.
Would you like to?
Okay.
Now, compelling reason why you.
Well, the only alternative would've been for us to tell them, "Don't ask."
Yeah, right, that's not right to the residents. Right, okay.
Okay, so I'll just bring everybody, now that we're all on the same page, bring everybody up to date on my situation. So my boiler needs to be replaced.
Can you identify, I'm sorry, you haven't done.
I'm sorry, I've been burly on Ten Crane Road.
Okay, thank you.
So my, my boiler needs to be replaced, so I'm, I'm left with the option to simply replace it as an oil boiler, and actually, any possible means of heating hot water for the house and other kinds of capital improvements that might be associated with, and replace the natural gas. I chose natural gas because I knew the gas line was there, I had done veterans before for the water, and there was a possibility of doing that sort of work, it wasn't a stretch, and I have, there's compelling financial reasons for me to go with gas over oil, there's a, you know, a significant cost associated with, with the oil decision. I'm, I'm now here in the grandfather situation, I know you're concerned perhaps about precedent, Keith and I had discussed this. My road and the, in fact, the year that my road was done is the only set of people that would require a waiver, because the, the 2009s will be, basically, nobody's gonna start and work now, they can't get the, you know, the permits and everything together by November fifteenth lockout, so the '09s will be all set come spring. I'm stuck here with a need to replace the boiler, it's a very small set of people from a precedent point of view that would even be capable of doing this, and most of them, except for myself, wouldn't be able to because of the year, you know, the pending frost. And I have no choice now but to do a significant capital improvement to my own, and would like to do the best option with the best ROI.
Can I, can I ask, so when you're, when you're talking about the dates here.
Yeah.
You're saying that in your analysis of the entire town, that Crane Road is the only road that's touched by potential gas tie-ins?
No, I didn't, I didn't specify Crane Road, but.
Okay.
The year is important.
Sure.
So to, so basically, you had to have, you had to have done work.
Right.
In '09 or, or '10 to fall into this category that I'm in, which is somebody who is, prior to the, to the new law ruling, whatever it is, policy, but less than five years, okay? Anybody else is gonna be more than the five years, you wanna have a problem.
And everybody's gonna be after the policy was stated, is that what you're saying, so?
And then others would be after the policy was stated.
But the policy.
So there was no, obviously, there was no communication to me or ability to give me notice, because the policy didn't exist at the time that the road was gonna be constructed.
Yeah, fair enough.
That somebody said, "Hey, we're gonna do construction on the road, last call for any kind of water hookup, yes." So people would have to not only fall into the date category that I'm in, but also have access to water and/or gas.
Yeah. So what, what then happens, for instance, on another road that has gas and water that's being repaired today?
They're all set, the policy's in place.
So, but now we have a form that Jim has come up with that permits us to come, for residents to come forward and say, "Well, I'm, I'm one of the case-by-case bases."
Yeah, understood, but I'm in, I'm in a different situation than they are, because they have had, they have had notice. I didn't have notice.
But you can probably foresee someone coming forth and saying, "A year from now, oh, I didn't know that there was a, the policy that the selectmen adopted in 2011." Couple that with, and, you know, we had Mr. Gertolito fill out a form, which is a case-by-case basis.
Right.
So we could be theoretically exposing ourselves to lots of people asking us for.
You could, but a way to mitigate that, in fact, I think, probably, I don't know if you do this, but it'd probably be good practice to send out notifications so that people affected by any kind of roadwork can make sure that they're aware of it, and there's no confusion.
I know Boston has that, that COBAC system that deals with that, and maybe we can start looking into that, but.
Yeah, something like that, I think would be appropriate, bring everybody, you know.
This doesn't, the application doesn't even explain, you know, is this just a service, or is this, you're gonna run all the way down the road and then connect your service?
No, it's already on the road, this is just from, from the road.
So how many square feet and?
Square feet.
How many square feet of pavement are gonna be removed and replaced?
I believe I read on the National Grid permit, maybe, Jim, you know, it's like a three by ten or something like that.
It's three or four feet out into the.
Oh, okay. So it's not going all the way across.
It's pretty small, and they, I mean, people patch roads all the time, I think it's probably doable. And Jim, you know, I appreciate the work that was done on the road, don't get me wrong, I'm not in any kind of way anxious to tear it up or destroy it or anything, I'm gonna, in fact, all of this, some of this that I read does cover the procedures people have to follow when they do cut into the road and make sure that it's left in the proper state. So again, I would just point to the uniqueness of the situation, the timing, the lack of notice, and, you know, the significant cost that I encourage should this not be approved.
I have a question for you. Are you doing this under the Mass Save program?
Not eligible for that, as I understand it, but there are other rebates offered and things that make gas very attractive for a lot of people, so it's a, it's a, you know, it's a common choice for people, and pointing back towards the policies when you're doing roadwork, you know, people should know, because there'll be a lot, there's a lot of people converting for a lot of reasons, right? It's greener, it's cleaner, and there's lots of, you know, cost benefits.
Is your, is your gas burner also gonna serve for your hot water heater?
Yeah.
And also your stove?
Well, that's the, yeah, so the cost, the dryer, your stove.
Yeah.
You know, everything ends up being cheaper.
But you'd be buying all-new appliances for those as well, then?
Yeah.
Have you considered propane at all?
It's more expensive.
Is there any type of?
Well, I, I had propane, it's pretty economical, so.
I mean, I, I don't see any, I haven't heard anything compelling, I hear things that are, it's gonna cost me much more, it's gonna cost me, I don't see any, you know, long-term, you know, any type of calculations, and I know when the gas, people call you up, "Oh, we'll do it much cheaper," and things like that, and I, I've never sat down to do the numbers, so.
I can tell you, I mean, I've been through it all.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's $2,000 a year minimum.
What is?
Less than oil, okay? Then there's capital improvement to the house and the value that that brings to the house. But I'll be honest with you, Ted, that's not my, my main argument here. My main argument is that I'm in a very small group of people, none of whom are here before you and won't be here before you, before November fifteenth, and I was not given any kind of notice, there couldn't have been any notice, the policy didn't exist when my road work was done. To me, there's got to be some kind of fairness in notification of people when they're no longer permitted to do something in the town, right? I mean, if we, if you'd said, everybody's gotta have four-cylinder cars, well, if people bought a six-cylinder a week before, you have to allow something to consider their situation, right? This, pretty clear grandfather situation here, and a small set of people that would even be eligible, as far as precedents concerned.
I got a question for Jim. Jim, you, you did have a policy previously to this being officially a selectmen's policy in regards to opening up the roads.
We, we had a, a street opening policy, we did not have a moratorium.
Okay.
And basically, we're one of the towns that did not have a moratorium, until we, again, researched and found, just about every other town, you know, has that in place.
And what was your policy prior to the moratorium?
Cut it?
Yeah, yeah.
Cut it?
There's no edit.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, there's, yeah.
We weren't doing.
There was no, there was no moratorium, so there's no way you could stop them, really.
We'd just undertaken the ten-year, multi-million dollar project, and prior to that, we weren't doing enough airwork to.
It was primarily Goldsmith Street, if you drove down the street, the road was in poor condition from all the utility cuts was the, was the real issue. So that's why we went with a moratorium, trying to minimize utility cuts. We, you know, we've talked in our office, at what point do we do notifications? Do we do it two years in advance of, of roadwork? So it becomes hard on us. We held a, a public hearing, and when the public is notified the way they are and everything else, do you send notices when you change a policy to everyone in town with something that affects them?
Would you like it?
No, I'm sorry, I'm just wanting, we're gonna, we don't wanna get back and forth, we'll talk to the board, we just try to bring to order, that's all.
I mean, I realize that he, you know, he's in a predicament and, you know, his perceived predicament, and we're, my job is to protect the roads, and that's what I'm advocating.
Yeah. I think we put a lot of money into this, put a lot of thought into our roads, and I think it's an investment that the town makes, and we have policies for reasons, and, you know, we need to have compelling reasons to change the policy, and, you know, I'd like to help out residents and.
She's impressed, I guess.
Well, let me finish my thought, I could, just, I just, you know, as much as I like to help out residents, I just think at this point, we have a policy, and when we start waiving policies, what's the use of having a policy? That's where I'm at. But, go ahead.
Yeah, well, two things, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. So, I get notifications all the time when a neighbor's gonna do anything, okay? So I don't think notifying people when they're, when roadwork's going to happen is a stretch. To Jim's kind of question about the, the overhead associated, and I'm not asking for the, the policy to be, to be waived, right? The policy, it's.
Basically, you are, I mean, that's what you filled out, you see, you filled out an application to waive the policy, right?
Yeah, but this, there's a, as I said, it's a, there's a case-by-case.
Yeah.
Consideration here for a reason.
Yeah.
Presumably, somebody could get approved.
Because someone could have a compelling reason.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, and, and mind you, that they've already stated in here that, you know, health danger to people and all that stuff is a separate set in and by itself. So when we talk about compelling reasons separate from that, I would think that the policy enacted after the road construction, no notification to the, to the homeowner, would certainly be about as compelling as you can get within the spectrum that's not health and safety. I mean, I'm not sure what other kind of, under what conditions would you waive, right?
People ask me, people have said, "I'm gonna be good for the zoning board of appeals," and I said, "No, I wouldn't," because I never see a reason for a, for a variance, so, and I think that's where I'm at right now. I think that, you know, we have policies in place, and, you know, so, you know, if we had, you know, an emergency, so.
And.
Well, the emergency's a separate condition.
Right, right.
Remember, okay?
I, I think part of it as well, and I certainly sympathize with your position, is that, my suspicion is there, your old oil burner is just that, it's an old oil burner. We were faced with a similar concern with ours, and we replaced it with a super-high-efficiency oil burner, which is saving us money year after year after year. I think if it was no oil burner and you're going to freeze, and there were no other options, Joe mentioned propane, I know there are super-high-efficient German Buder, Buderis boilers, there are, you know, there are wood stoves, there are other ways that people can keep warm apart from gas, and I'm also somewhat influenced by the fact that you'd be buying a gas boiler and a new water heater and a new stove and a new oven and a new dryer. It seems like there are all these other purchases that are happening as well, so the argument that you're making with respect to finance, financial, to me, gets watered down when I hear that there are all these other purchases being made of major appliances.
Over time, they all save money. It's a, it's an investment in my, in my house.
I hear that, yeah.
So it's a return on investment, you know? There's upfront cost, but over time, it saves money and increases the value alone. But nevertheless, that's, again, it wasn't my, my initial, and I think, you know, compelling reason for being here, is that this is a special case in terms of the dates.
Sure, you have a question?
I have a, Joe?
I, I feel for what's going on here, but I mean, if we, I can even talk about down where we live, where they just did a Bruce Street, and there was a house lot that was bought on the street, you see all the markings in the road for water, but then they found out that this was in place, and they had the, financially, put a well in. So I mean, if we, I think.
What's the year, Joe?
Well, we're trying, can you just finish?
I think, I think as a board, I mean, if we allow one, then we're just gonna open it up. I think the policy was put there for a reason, I think we have to stand by it.
And we have to rely on our professionals that are in place for us, too.
Well, no surprise, I, I don't really wanna see the road dug up, you know, spend a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer's money. The problem I see here is that, that your argument is a strong argument, in that, you know, you weren't, the policy was created after your decision time, your decision was made for you by us. And we also have conflicting language here, so it looks like it can be done on a case-by-case basis. That's really what I, you know, I, it just feels like this is a big government saying, "This is what we're gonna do, and you're gonna go along with it." And, and I think we should, when we adopted this policy, been a little more sensitive to how we might impact people. It's not like we were looking across the whole town, we were looking at Goldsmith Street, and we knew what our projects were gonna be, and we spent some time to talk to the water department and the gas company and everybody else to say, "Yep, we're doing the road, get in there and do the work," but we didn't tell the people on Crane Road. And I don't know which one outweighs the other, but I understand your argument, and, and hope that if nothing else comes of this, we fix this up a little bit. But I would also say that your argument is only relevant to Crane Road, and that there isn't another road that falls where somebody else could come in. So I don't think we're opening the floodgates, I think we're, we're looking at one specific half-mile a road, three-quarters of a mile a road, something like that.
Alex, may I add something to?
Well.
I'll do those with gas and water access, by the way.
I think Alex, you've restated his points that he made, and I think, you know, some of them are valid points to me, but not compelling, and I think if we're done, we can go vote, unless anybody else has anything to add? Okay?
Our lead fine, move that the board of selectmen vote to grant a waiver from Selectmen's Regulations and Policies, Section 7.4, Street Opening Permit Subsection A1, which prohibits the quote, "Cutting of road surfaces five years old or newer, except in cases of quote, 'emergency repairs to utilities,' for installation of a new gas line for Ten Crane Road, and if granted, authorize the Highway Operations Manager to issue a street openings permit therefore."
Did you say?
Motion, thank you, I have, I got it. Motion's been made and seconded to grant a waiver from the Selectment's Regulations and Policies.
It wasn't seconded.
Motion been made, I'm sorry, you're right. Motion been made to grant a waiver from the Selectment's Regulations.
Seven.
Okay, now, we have a motion that's been made and seconded to grant a waiver from the Selectment's Regulations on Street Opening Permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on now to special town meeting, adopt article recommendations. As we heard already, in public comment from a couple of people, that there are some thoughts on these. Do we want to attack those? Do we want to approve the ones that we can, or whittle these down and come back to the ones that we, that we've thoughts on?
Power through.
Power through? All right, ready?
I agree.
All right, so...
That's good.
Let's see. Fiscal impasse, let's see, Article one.
And be thinking about which one of you wants to take which one.
All right, well, let's go back to that. Did you talk to the moderator at all about, you know, how they're going to be introduced? Because I know that's what this sheet usually was for, as to who's going to introduce what. And in the last couple of years with the town meeting packets, there has been less need to introduce them?
Yeah, I haven't had a discussion with them since last Monday on, on this, but we certainly intend to raise the, the idea of us having the board actually stand up at the microphone and say something.
Okay, so we'll still introduce them, so we should just go ahead and select them all right, as we go through. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about that, too? If an article obviously is not, has nothing to do with our board at all, say it's a planning board issue, do we still take it and introduce it, or does it goes straight to the planning?
Now, the planning board introduces the planning board articles. The, however, if it comes to the selectmen, you state what the opinion of the Board of Selectment is on the article, if you would adopt one, then you'd want to have a spokesperson.
So we need to do three things, well, yeah, we need to vote whether, we're not going to, whether we're going to support them, and who's going to take the assignment, and then we circle back around, we'll vote to insert, right, or to...
We just want to vote to support.
Support, okay.
Well, we just go through, see who's going to take, and then we can go back and support, or have a discussion of...
Okay.
Just get right through that.
All right. Those are prior years.
I'll take that one.
Well, it's mine. I always have it.
I got it, I got it.
Fund collective bargaining.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute.
Just put the X in the box under Brownson.
That's just not right.
Jim should take number two, though, since it's the collective bargaining.
Yeah, you take that one.
Oh gee, thanks, I like that, I like to pry you of those.
I hate that one. All right, budget amendments.
I'll take that one.
All right. LCTV, they're all, they're all one, all right, so, all right, I can go with that.
So you're taking four?
One and, yeah, four.
One and two, okay.
Well, one and two. I'll take five.
Oh, that's a softball.
Well, that's his, right up his alley.
I'll take six.
You want six?
The ones that everyone hates. Except for some people who love it.
Those are usually given to me.
I'll take it.
That's fine. Russell Street Sidewalk Easement.
I'll take it.
You might as well take both of them.
Okay, I get those, no.
Seven and eight?
I should be all set then.
No.
All right, let's see. Transfer of land to conservation.
All right, I'll take that one.
What's McCurdy doing? He's sleeping down there, huh?
No.
Oh, he's got one, okay.
Zoning bylaw amendment.
Let Jerry take that one.
Jerry, all right. I think we, I mean, it's, it's on town meeting, so we can approve, I just, I think we should read the article, and we'll just turn it right over to the planning board, so I can introduce that.
Okay.
Establish parking rec, rec, community education enterprise fund.
I'll take that one.
Oh, OPEB, that's mine.
That's yours. Just because you like to say OPEB.
OPEB, yeah.
I'll take that one. I'll do CPA.
Bylaw amendment, manner of authorizing indebtedness.
Alex, you take that one.
Well, that sounds like a fun one.
Sounds dry.
Bylaw amendment, fees.
I got it.
Ooh, this one's mine. I'm not going to read it.
Home rule petition.
Subsidy, home rule petition, subsidized housing.
So you've got one, two, three, so you've got four.
I got four, okay.
One, two, three, four.
Motion to withdraw. All right, let's see which ones, let's just go through and see where there are ones to support. General opinion of Article one, bills are prior years, this is almost needs to be. All right, so we're on that one. Fund collective bargaining agreement.
Easy.
Easy, all in general agreement?
Yeah.
To support.
Budget amendments, we have some...
Yeah, so the change for the budget amendments was for the, there's a request to increase the, I would say elder human service.
To increase the...
There's a typo, yeah. All right. Where, so where's the $4,500? So there's, there's a request from the historical commission...
Yes.
...to request, they requested the $2,000... Can I, can I finish?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So there is a request from the historical commission on the town meeting warrant where they have a line item for $2,000 as the start of a proposal to restore the long store, and now there is a request to increase that to $3,500, Keith, if I'm not mistaken.
That's, that's the revised request.
Okay. So, it is, I will turn it over then to historical, or somebody willing to talk about this, about what the justification and the request is, is about.
For the increase from two...
Yes.
Yeah, Linda Stein, Littleton Historical Commission. We, we contacted an architect recently to give us actual cost estimates. We did not have those until very recently. The $3,500 figure is the minimum cost estimate that the architect gave us to develop initial building drawings, conceptual drawings for the reconstruction of the long store project that we are planning to go forward with and apply for additional funding to the CPC. But to, to, to start the project, the first thing we needed to do is contact an architect and get these conceptual drawings. The $2,000 amount will not cover the cost of the initial drawings, $3,500 is the minimum cost estimate. The architect also gave us a cost estimate for an additional $9,500 for an options analysis as part of a feasibility study. We would like to pursue that if there's any additional town funds available towards that as well.
Anybody, I can start, if you want.
Well, my, have we been to the CPC, the community preservation...
Keith, you want to get the, you want to get the background on that?
Not yet, the, my advice to the historical commission previously had been that they need to submit a request to the Community Preservation Committee, because this project does qualify for funding.
Mm-hmm.
I heard the concern that they didn't want to have to wait for that process, which, which culminates in May, next May, and that would be the soonest that they could get any money at all to go forward, because they only have $700 in their budget. So the middle ground was, well, let's, you know, maybe there's a few thousand dollars that we can give you so that you can do something this, this winter to advance the cause while you're submitting it, the full grant application to the CPC. Now, when I say full, it's actually only partial, because to do, to do a project, we're talking about some design money now, and some construction, project money later. We don't yet know, and it's in the course of this preliminary analysis that we can get a better handle on what, what kind of money we're talking about. But the place they should be going for the big money is the Community Preservation Committee, and, and I'm pleased to hear that they're, that they're heading, heading there. The only, the only thing along the way is how much seed money can we give them? Bonnie and I had expressed support for $2,000, if they've got to have $3,500 to get some work product done, you know, that's not, that's not an unreasonable amount, assuming that you're okay with having that, having them go and do work on a project at all without having a town meeting vote on, you know, on a big project. We don't have leave, and we wouldn't, we won't be asking town meeting for leave to, to go ahead and do something with the long store, we're asking them to give the, the historical commission additional money in their operating budget, which in their discretion they would then use to study.
So, so moving forward, fiscal year 15, as, you know, we go back to the original 700 or whatever the original budget was, so this is a one-time funding?
One-time.
Yeah, the operating budget would be small, I think if there's project money that's needed for, for a long store project, that ought to be a standalone capital item and funded through community preservation. It doesn't mean that they'll have $2,700, or 30, or 3,000 in their budget, year after year.
Part of what we need these conceptual drawings for is to develop our proposal to the CPC.
Here's my thoughts on it. I think, to quote Mr. Del Prio, it seems like we're chipping away at things here, we're getting small amounts of money, small amounts of money, and we get to one point, Jerry, and what did they say? We've gotten this far, if we don't go forward with the project now, we're going to waste all the money that we can, that we used, and, and I, and I kind of see the start of that, I'm not saying I'm totally opposed to the $3,500, because we are talking, you know, relatively, could be called a drop, but how many drops do we have, and how many other people are going to be coming to replenish their budgets? And the thing I don't know yet is whether or not this is supported by the town, and the town may support the $3,500, but are they going to support the multi-hundred thousand dollars or that could be used to reconstruct and purchase land? And, you know, without any sort of plan like that, I have a hesitation to, to go forward without a full plan of what's going to happen, any type of cost estimate. So, yes, sir?
Dr. Andrew Watt, whoever in the Littleton Historic Commission, I would say several things. Number one, is that it's very hard to get public support without producing some sort of deliverable, a blueprint, a plan, and so the $700, the commission has operated on for the past 15 years, is literally our total operating expense, because we have other responsibilities in the town, such as historical markers, et cetera. Last year, we operated with our $700 budget, and we actually spent almost $20,000. The $20,000 was obtained through donations, and that is actually how we purchased the storage facility for the long store, hired a contractor, and actually had the long store taken down. We did not require any additional funding within our budget to proceed in that way. We understand that the CPA gives us funds to do this project, but again, it's extremely hard to write an application for a large volume of money or get town approval without some sort of deliverable.
That's a good point. Anybody else have anything?
All right, this is, this is a case where, in my opinion, you've lived on $700 for all these years, they were asking for this one time, and, just like the doctor said, if they want to do something, they have to have some money to go do it, so I don't have a problem with it.
I, I don't have, I don't have a problem with the funding either, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, moving forward, coming back to 15, just bring it back down, and that way they have the CPC and know that the CPC money is there specifically for you guys to use.
Right, it's, it's no promise of an additional, of a larger operating budget year in year up, but it also is the expectation that, that additional funding for the project will need to go through the community preservation funding process.
That's all I want to make.
That's what they're going to do.
That's all.
And, and is there any best estimate on what it's going to cost to put the long store back together properly?
No, part of this options analysis feasibility study would give us that cost estimate.
Do you have to have the blueprints before you do the options analysis? You can't do an options analysis first?
No, it's, it's very challenging, because the option analysis has to do with site layout, et cetera, and you need the blueprints to determine sizing.
But aren't you going to put the plan back together the way the bill, put the billing back together the way it was before?
Yes, but...
Closest possible.
But there are no considerations we have to consider.
So you have the general dimensions, I just think that...
Well, we, we have contracted with a group called the Restored Homestead, and what...
In the past.
Right, in the past, and what they recommend for these type of structures is to actually enclose the actual original structure inside of sort of a shell structure, because of the construction methods today are dramatically different, it would be really hard to build because the dimensioned lumber is undersized based on modern code. Does that make sense?
Somewhat.
Yeah.
So it's a long store inside a...
A long, a long store.
A modern long store.
That's right. It has the historical appearance from the outside, it has the historical...
A longer store.
Appearance from the inside, but there's actually some actual added structure to actually make it legal.
But it will not be the 100 feet that it was originally.
That's right.
It'll be like 116 feet.
No.
It'll be smaller.
All right, does the board have enough information to vote?
Yeah, I'm good.
Uh, we're going to, so we're going to, Keith, we're going to support that, the $3,500?
Yeah, so, so in the proposed motion, which is on page six of this, that we'll have the 2,000 adjustment, thirty-five hundred, and we'll take that much out of the employee retirement benefits, lots of that.
Forty-two hundred is the total, that's what they...
Thirty-five.
But, but they use that 700 budget, or is that...
Well, the...
Oh, that's just the adjusted, so...
Yeah, the adjustment will go up by...
Yeah, 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 and that's the single line item that does, has no bearing on subsequent years.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the other parts of this motion include the $328,000 going into the OPEB fund, increasing our contribution from 605 up to 933,000 and change. We're funding year two of the highway contract, the article, the previous article, we only get to request year one funding under the law, so we've separated them out, and so that's, and plus, we're correcting a typo in the elder human services part, the way it needs to read in accordance with your MOL.
All right, all in on the budget amendments?
Yep.
All right. Capital items from available funds. We have two projects requesting funds from existing balances, any...
LCTV is requesting 65,000, just in the nick of time, it looks like, with camera one tonight.
Yeah, but that was net zero to the, to the operating budget.
That's correct. The entire amount comes from a balance of, I think there's about 400,000 and change in the, in the PEG account funds that they have to access, and proposing 65,000, which would pay for retro in this room, 103, it will install cameras, robotic cameras in 307, and it will provide a mobile community as well.
Okay. So the, and then the public radios, the stabilization fund that we just, that we just funded is now getting tapped for, about what, 75% of the cost of it?
Yeah, well, we, we had...
Of 60%?
Yeah, the judgment was made that we had X amount of dollars set aside for capital for the annual town meeting, and since they were not high enough priority projects to justify all of that being spent...
Yeah.
196,000 was put aside in a capital stabilization fund. Frankly, in order to maximize the amount you put into OPEB, you need to access the, spend it out of the capital stabilization fund, so that's what the recommendation was.
Is FinCom waiting?
FinCom hasn't weighed in on anything, that they haven't, that they're not even needing until next week.
I was saying, I know this stabilization fund was a big, a big item for us, something we really wanted to do for a long time, and now we're doing it, and we just hate to see tap it so soon.
Well, OPEB is also the other thing that we're, that we're...
Yeah, all right.
The priority.
Any thoughts, any general understanding that we support? All right, Littleton 300th, this is, this is an interesting one, because we have this big 300th anniversary, and we have the 300th committee who is, who's raising a lot of money from donations and through their own fundraising, and now we have, they're requesting that the town kick in a portion, and that requested amount is $50,000. You want to go?
If I can, I want to, we have the chairman of the 300th, we have the chairman of the parade committee, we also have Diane of the opening committee, they can probably speak on it, but I'll let you take it, Jack, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, from that standpoint, we came in and we said we were going to fund this without the town doing anything. We have a $200,000 budget, that hasn't changed, I've broken that down before for you, so you know what, what goes. From the standpoint, we have 20,000 of that is what we call the legacy. The legacy, we'd like to have $100,000, $200,000, as much as we can. We're in the process right now of, of raising money. We, as a committee, a town committee, can only do certain things, so that's why we formed the Friends. So that's why we formed the Friends. The Friends are doing, as Joe mentioned earlier, the auction, the raffles and things like that. And basically, they have said they will come up with half, about $200,000. Okay? That's a question. Okay? We have said we will come up with $100,000, basically on banners, sales and everything. You've seen banners up that we put up, basically, just to see what they are. We're probably going to modify them slightly, do some, a few different things with them. But we anticipate, and our reception has been great because we've hit, we've hit the letters out now, and we're getting calls in to go and talk to these people and all. Again, we don't have an exact amount of money. From, we anticipate that we will have the $200,000. And again, 20 of that goes to the legacy. The legacy is going crazy. They're, you know, welcome to Littleton signs, everything else, they're, you know, redoing the common and everything, far exceeding a cost of $20,000. So far that we have thought now of, because some people have come to us and said, are you going to have anything that we could have in memory of somebody? Could we give, you know, a bench, or can we do this? So we're formulating that. A lot of things, you know, we, we did the 200,000, but we're now, we're branching out as, as various things come in. And Barney and the finance committee and Keith came to us and said, look, do you need possibly something to help get it all started? And so we said, that's fine, because naturally fundraising is a question, especially in this economy and everything else that goes with it. So that's where we are. They have come up with the 50,000 figure. It was party, then they, they've changed it to 50, which is, which is fine. Understand that we're not going to spend a penny more than we said we would in the beginning, and that the things will be for the legacy and everything else. This will give us the confidence that we've got it between now and the time that we do it. We're getting pledges. Our first pledge was from the Vincent Cooper Foundation, $10,000, $2,500 for four straight years. We've got 7,500 of that. We'll get another 2,500 come with the first year. So we anticipate that when we go out and look for the big donors, that's going to be the same thing. They're going to want to split it. Their advertising dollars, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for their advertising dollars. And we have to give them the bang for the buck. So, you know, if somebody comes along and says, I'll give you $20,000, just to use a figure, you know, but I want to do 10 this year and 10 next year and everything else. So that we want to have that cushion. That's basically what we want.
It's kind of like a short-term bond.
Right, exactly.
So how much, just to be clear, this will probably come out on the timing floor, how much do you expect to be coming back? This is, I mean, that's a $50,000 question.
In all honesty, this isn't known right now, and we don't want to say that. What it does, this money will give, it gives the committee working capital that they know they have, even in the parade things, very shortly, we have to come up with money to secure some of these bands, and we don't have the funding. So this, this initial funding into the count helps that out.
Lets you write a check, and no more bounce.
Exactly.
And that's what's fine.
It's to buy memorabilia, for instance, we're going to sell memorabilia. And, you know, you have to get dies, you have to do this, that, and everything for plates and mugs and shirts and everything else. So, you know, it's, it's a shot in the eye.
Okay.
Is there any way we can include in the warrant article language that says some of this or all of it may be paid back? Is there some way that, when someone comes to town meeting and has never seen this before can look and say, oh, it's, as you said, a short-term bond of $50,000 which we may get back?
Well, I think at town meeting, you'll do a presentation. I don't, I don't know, I don't know where it applies in here, but I definitely think a presentation, that would be a good thought to be included.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
I mean, you could put it in plain language text too, I suppose. You know, further explain this, this is working capital, a short-term...
Well, if you're meaning to say that if you, if you can get, if you can get donations to cover these costs, that you won't spend the money.
Yeah, sure. No, actually, I think, I like, it may be something to put into the...
Put it in just what you said.
Put in the...
If you need it, use it. If you don't, you don't.
Yeah, but I think it's just great that, I think the whole meaning of this is to save time on the timing floor, and that may save at least a dozen questions. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else want to talk? All right, I think it's great work, and I appreciate you coming down and explaining to us. Article six.
Can we skip over that, Mr. Chairman? Just keep going down.
Come on!
Okay, since that might, yeah, since that's going to be a long discussion.
No, it's not.
We'll be right back to you. We'll be right back.
All right, so article seven. Do we have a general agreement of support?
Yes.
All right. Same with eight, yes?
Yes. See how quickly this is going? Do not despair.
Hey, we're going almost as fast as office talks. Article nine, transfer land to conservation, cemetery commissioners.
There's a question about the crackness of those last two.
Article...
Article...
Article, Jerry, did you have something? Sorry.
I was just looking at the maps, and one of those parcels that we're talking about, 60 feet by 20 feet, roughly triangular shaped, that works out to more than 150 square feet. Probably the geometry is exercised...
For article eight.
Well, we hired the lawyers, not the engineers to write up the language, so that's why, that's why it says plus or minus.
Let's square that up more. Does everybody have an answer on the timing floor?
Surveyors looked at several dimes, they had questions. There, the easement is an easement within an easement.
Okay.
75-foot easement, it's 150-foot.
Okay.
So 75 is within 100.
Okay, maybe that's what we...
I guess that's the square for loans.
All right, let's see. Article 10. I know we've had comments on that a couple times. We had a discussion and some comments earlier tonight. I think, as this is a planning board, and they're still going to be taking this up, I think, I think I...
You should have pulled your recommendation till after the planning board.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Let's see. Article 11, establish enterprise fund.
Yes.
On that. All right. 12, OPEB. Well, in general agreement of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, those two articles are recommendations of the anniversary.
CPA, this is the rewording, basically, right?
Well, you know, we actually, town council was able to get with Bonnie's health and some language from DLR, just hot off the press, we were able to get language, even in the article, that was clearer than, than it had been a week ago. So we added another whereas clause to state our purpose, and even more clearly, we hope, and we also got, the DLR gave us the amended language in the therefore paragraph, which...
You're going to have the new language in?
It's in.
It is?
It's in, no, this is the new language.
Oh, okay, I thought you said just give it this week, okay, yeah.
Well, it came in, it came in since our last...
Before that, okay, all right. Manner of...
We held out the posting for one, one day, actually, in order to get, DLR to give us the language.
Article 14, bylaw amendment, manner of authorizing indebtedness.
Yeah, you've already voted to approve this, this is to allow unanimous votes to be cast on borrowing without having to count all the votes.
Bylaw fees, this is what we discussed with conservation.
Yep, this eliminates redundant language in the law.
Home rule petition. I think we discussed this one pretty fully, and I think, I think we all in support of that, yeah?
Yes. I'll be attending a legislative hearing on similar bills later this month.
So all I see is...
Well, we've got to be six still. Don't run ahead.
Well, we can approve one.
Well, that's, no, that's right, that's what you said, yeah.
We still have time, we have 50 minutes to discuss it.
Six, what's the score?
1-0.
Article six. So there's been a interesting development on how to cut some, cut some electric rates and to, and to fund community preservation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Board members, for those that don't know me, for the people to record, my name is Savvas Danos. I'm the general manager of the Light and Water Department, with me Scott Edwards, Assistant General Manager, who will be able to attest to the technical merits of this, of this article. One thing I want to start this conversation with, it's a good opportunity for us to have questions and answers, but we are not asking the board of selectmen for a vote tonight. As Keith and I and Scott discussed, we're in the middle of finishing our pro forma, which Scott should be giving results of that feasibility study, basically, over the next few days. That will prompt our board to have a meeting to determine the feasibility financially of this project based on the solar voltage project and the amount of revenues coming back, going back to the community, as well as the peaking generator, which we know has a certain value to the way payer. So until our board has the opportunity to review the pro forma and to make a final decision, this is all, if you will, window dressing. What we hope to do is have a decision made in the next few weeks, then ask for a meeting specifically with this board, with our select, with our board, to discuss the merits of the pro forma and what the true value of the PV output is. Because until we have an essence that we're basing on $120,000, until Scott's done the analysis and knows what that true value is based on all the theories and practices of solar voltages, it's, we don't know. We believe we're going to have a very solid project, but over the next two weeks, it will be codified or not, at our level.
So the pro forma does not affect the structure, though? You're just telling, that'll just narrow down the numbers? It doesn't change the structure the way the fund's going to be distributed?
But whatever the pro forma says, we don't believe it will. What the pro forma says, the landfill is a good place to do this.
I do. Yeah, but it doesn't change much. I mean, what I'm saying is, do you still want to, it sounds like we still want to go through the structure of this, or do we want to...
Oh, yes, sure. But what I'm saying is that the ultimate decision should be held up until you have the opportunity to sit down with our board, and our board and your board to sit down and discuss the merits of the, of the value, and then you come to the back to consensus. So the overall structure, we don't believe will change, but we aren't asking the board to make a decision tonight until such time as we have the opportunity to have the pro forma reviewed by senior staff, and then first reviewed by our board. The board's take a vote on this, the board's not voting on it yet, because they're waiting for the pro forma. And in the meantime, we're still meeting with other stakeholders. We've met with a few stakeholders, contrary to Mr. MacGyver's position. We are meeting with additional stakeholders of the next month and hope to have everybody on the same page on this, on this very complex, but at the end of the day, a very simple article. And what the article basically says is that, okay, I'll stop there.
Do we want to find out what the article is, or do we want to wait till the pro forma is completed?
I'd rather wait until we get the, hear from the board of commissioners, absolutely.
Until the board of commissioners meets with us, right? They come here, right?
That's correct.
Sometime between now and November 4.
Over the next few weeks.
Yeah, all right.
Potentially two weeks from tonight, you'd be ready to come back?
Over the next few weeks. Once Mr. Edwards gets done with the pro forma, we have our board meeting. So frankly, if everything goes well, we meet maybe next Monday with our board and the Monday after this point. That would be an ultimate goal.
I mean, right now, it's on the, it's on the warrant, so...
It's on the warrant.
It's a placeholder right now.
Exactly, exactly. And you're not adopting a planning board, a recommendation on the planning boards, all right, all until they...
It's a big wait.
So the same considerations as before.
Exactly, that's what we're asking for.
Don, given the consideration that you've already spoken to this at length and how you're against it, do you have something different that you wanted to add in?
I think it's the points, the characteristics.
No, 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 you have any?
No, I...
We're not discussing it, though, tonight. So we're, the board's not discussing it, so I don't know if we, I don't know if we want to, we're waiting till we have the pro forma, so I think we should wait and take all comments until we have the pro forma. Okay?
Well, excuse me, what the concerns me is that even the title doesn't address the core.
Okay, great, we'll discuss that on the night that we have the pro forma and we have, we have the lighting commissioners here.
The fact that the bank, who doesn't body, doesn't, doesn't suit to a special town meeting, that you're just going to brush that aside?
We're going to take it all and discuss it all when we have the full pro forma.
One thing I can say about the timing...
We'll discuss it when we...
The main thing is the timing, the overall timing issue, because that's been raised by some people. This office has kept about, it is a long process, and having a special town meeting vote on if, if we are to use a landfill or not, with all the details behind that, allows Scott and our staff to begin a very obvious process of design, bidding. This is a one to two-year project, and so the sooner we can get started on it, the better off we are. So the idea about timing, the timing won't matter if it's a fall, the spring, for perspective, well, it is what it is.
Yeah.
It's, there's three parts to it, it's pretty straightforward at the end of the day. So do we wait a month, do we wait six months? From that perspective, it doesn't matter, it's not going to change. The only thing that changes is are we going to have a landfill as an opportunity to do this partnership or not?
Yeah.
And that's really what the, what the issue becomes a town meeting. The details will be worked out in advance of that, and the town meeting vote, frankly, is, there's a three-person, three-way partnership, is it going to work for the town or not, for exchange of revenues, in exchange for a solar voltage, a renewable program, and a peak shaving unit for all way piers. Comes down to that.
Yeah, regarding the timing, I'm sure, Don, you'll make your point at, at special town meeting.
And I'll be meeting with Don's group a week from model on...
Town meeting as well, so you'll have a chance to make your point to town meeting, but I think our, I think the idea now is this sounds a great opportunity, and I think it needs to get brought to, to special town meeting, to the town, town for a vote as soon as possible. Jerry?
Basically, I've got a couple of technical questions.
Jerry, 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 yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Go ahead.
Basically, if you're going to be putting a 2.5-megawatt generator in, there's a tremendous amount of waste heat coming off that, is, have you guys ever considered perhaps setting up that generator using it as a combined heating power plant?
The, that's a great idea, but it's not really a generator, the generator's only going to run six to eight hours a month. So it really, bless you, it really doesn't, it will generate heat, but it's, it's a, it's a very small amount of heat in a period.
So wouldn't it make sense to run it in the winter time, full time?
No, these generators aren't, they're really just to offset our, our peak hours in a month. They're not very efficient as far as the power that we buy from large generators that get shipped into Littleton. So the cost of the power, actual power coming out of it, is quite expensive. It's the fact that it lowers our peak. So we won't want, we won't want to run it very often.
Okay, and, well then, could you double it up as an emergency generator for some town facility, or it's already pretty well taken care of?
Yeah, it's kind of where you put, I mean, we could, we could back up the transfer station, actually.
The transfer station is still...
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
That's what I was saying. The transfer stations, they all do. Something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we've got, we just have to run the wire, just run the register wire, I don't know, it seems like, you'd be back feeding the grid, basically, right?
With an emergency generator, you have to have it at the building.
Oh, yeah.
You tie it right into the building, so, you know, it's, it's not the best, you know, to tie in and in.
This is not an awful thing, come on, are we in trouble?
No.
Oh, it's too small, yeah.
No.
Yes.
I'm Joey Terry from Howard Avenue. And are we going to talk about it tonight or not?
No, we're going to wait till we get the, the pro forma.
So when will be the opportunity for someone like myself to ask the questions that I have?
You can either go to their meeting, or you can come to the joint meeting when we are going to be...
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm wondering because it seems like kind of a tight timeframe.
Yeah.
I've just read it, it's very convoluted, and so it's very complex, and it's harder to wrap my mind around it, but am I going to have to, like, decide what I think and try to influence your decision in, like, an hour? Or is there going to be more time for conversation?
Well, there's going to be, there's going to be...
I think the board is hoping to be influenced by whatever information comes forward from the proponents.
So when will someone like myself get here?
I think you, we will be having a joint, hey?
That conversation.
We would like, we're going to have a meeting here, but we're also going to, you can also go to the Light and Water Department, they're going to, you're going to be talking to them very, much sooner than us, so I think if you could watch their agenda, and then at our joint meeting, there will also be times to, to provide comments.
We'll be going to CPC this Thursday, we'll be going, again, in a, in a broad brush, we'll be going to the Constitution Trust, we'll be going to the Constitution Commission, and if necessary, we're going back to Sustainability Committee. So over the next month, we'll be going to most standing committees that have any, any better stakeholders in this. Obviously, our meeting as well, which is more of a working meeting, and then the Board of Selectmen, so there will be at least six occasions where this topic will be discussed in detail, to some degree.
Could you post that on your website?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So Steve Sastre, Lake Warren Drive, I'm under the second, there is concern that the, the community has complained that there isn't enough time to examine, study, talk about issues before they reach the town meeting, so even though you're making these many visits, it only covers a small segment of the community. So I think this topic needs more wide exposure before people should, should be voting on it.
Yeah, I understand.
My impression is that this is a recipe for money laundering.
Well, I, I take that as an insult, I don't think that's true. I think that's really not, I think to, 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 to make that implication of Savas Danos, who has worked here for how many years you worked here, to say there's some type of money laundering, I think that's kind of, and maybe, maybe it was the wrong, maybe you chose the wrong term, I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It is moving money around, and the up chart is that money which was dedicated to open space specifically, is now put into a much bigger pot.
Where we can get.
Used for any other purposes, pot that, that the CPC might, might elect.
But the CPC also gets thirty-five cents on the dollar, open space doesn't, right?
Are you reading from, from the state match?
Yeah, yeah, right? So anyway, we're going to discuss the merits of this much more at the, at the upcoming meeting.
I was just going to say that I, I too was somewhat perplexed by all of this, and today stopped in and talked to Mr. Danos about it, and I came away from it after having an opportunity to ask questions with a better understanding as to the process and how CPC would factor into it, and the funding, and the money, and the guessing of what might be the income from the photovoltaic. My sense is that if Savas had the opportunity to have a presentation in the same way that Chief Wazinski's made presentations about his idea, if, if you had a chance for that, I think people would feel better about hearing about it before special town meeting, if in fact.
Will there be that chance, because?
Yes, we're having a meeting in, in a couple of weeks, I said, right? And he's going to make a presentation, we're going to discuss it at that point, that's what I expect.
Correct.
Maybe that's not as clear to people who don't come to these as often, but that's what I expect, there would be some sort of summary and presentation.
What, what I would encourage perhaps is you to host something at Littleton Electric and Light and Water Department, for folks to come and ask questions as I did today. It's different being in a setting like this where you've got Ted in charge of the conversation and on an agenda and with timeframes, to have a more open discussion might be the best way to serve people, rather than people chasing you from meeting to meeting.
That's our pleasure.
Okay.
I just feel that my point is, at town meeting, which is where most of the town meeting attendees interfere about this, you're not going to be able to absorb what.
But we'll see. Jenna said she got it pretty quickly today, and so hopefully town meeting we'll get that, and if they don't get it, they'll have the opportunity to vote against it. And if Savas goes and takes Jenna's suggestion, and they don't show up at these hearings, and they don't have time to, to, to take it all in at town meeting, I don't know what else we can do for them. We're trying to lead the horse to water here by offering all these opportunities, so hopefully we'll have people.
And I think, excuse me, Mr. Chair. I, I think just the booklet alone also is going to be, you know, very helpful once we get all the pro forma, and to be able to put the total puzzle together in this in layman's terms, so everybody can understand it. Everybody's going to get a copy of it. So I think that's going to be very helpful.
I just think town meeting will be kind of late.
We've heard that, yeah, I've heard that a few times.
It will be, we understand.
All right, so what do we have here? One, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, you got it?
Let's let the Board of Selectmen vote to support the following articles in the November fourth, two thousand thirteen special town meeting warrant, and direct the preparation of motions to be moved and seconded by said board. Specifically, Article One, bill of prior years, Article Two, fund collective bargaining agreements, Article Three, fiscal year two thousand fourteen budget amendments, Article Four, fiscal year two thousand fourteen capital items from available funds, Article Five, Littleton three hundredth, Article Seven, Russell Street sidewalk easement, Article Eight, Russell Street aerial utility line and pole easement, Article Nine, transfer to land to conservation, Article Eleven, establish parking recreation and community education enterprise fund, Article Twelve, other person fully benefit liability trust fund, Article Thirteen, Community Preservation Act Amendment, Article Fourteen, bylaw amendment, manner of authorizing indebtedness, Article Fifteen, bylaw amendment fees, and Article Sixteen, home loan petition, subsidized housing inventory and abstaining on a recommendation with respect to Article Six, revenue sharing, solar peak generator at town landfill cell towers at water, and Article Ten, zoning bylaw amendment, motor vehicles slash vehicular retail sales.
Get it? Keith?
Got it.
All right. Motion made in second, motion made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nope.
All right, um.
I'll see them.
Read enough, read enough, thank you. Had to ask someone outside.
Hope you're on schedule.
Yes.
Nice one.
Does anybody have a problem with taking conflict of interest law and special municipal employees at this time?
I think that there might be folks showing up at quarter to nine, so.
All right, Alex has had, Alex, I think so, Alex has made the request to have it bumped from the agenda, and I was just trying to move it up, so.
Bumped off?
Yeah, bumped off until another time. So I was just trying to accommodate that while keeping it on the agenda. So let's move on then to town administrator and assistant town administrator, financial budget, and we have to talk about the financial policy amendments.
We have Steve Anody here.
So we're voting tonight, after we hear from Steve, whether or not we want to receive these proposed amendments, and then to schedule adoption of policy amendments at our, at another meeting, if we so choose. Mr. Anody.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Policy Committee, made up of Mr. Carr, Mr. Blavy, and myself, Bonnie, Chris, and...
Mike Fontenelle?
Mike Fontenelle.
No, Chris.
Chris.
Right, yeah. He's, which is?
Finance committee.
We met over the summer and looked at the financial policy, which was last approved by the Selectmen in two thousand and ten, to see if it needed warranted some updating. Then we did come up with, with some changes to the policy that we're asking the Selectmen to approve. They're bolded in the policy that you should have in front of you. The big changes, besides some, some.
Cost cleaning.
Verbages up front, policy statement is on page two, which talks about the distribution of the undesignated fund balance. We've added Item C and D, OPEB and other reserves. Again, a lot of this is just codifying some of the things that we've done in the past few years as practice.
So, all right, so A, B, E and F, the ones that obviously, the current, and after the shift.
They were just revenue.
So those are the ones that are losing are from the OPEB? These other two are taking from those?
Yes, yeah. But we have put in OPEB from, from this fund, because it was one of the trust funds, we're just saling out with the ten percent number there.
For specific, specifically.
That's in addition to what we have been putting into the appropriation, okay?
Great.
The bottom, page three, it talks about the capital stabilization fund, that was started last, last meeting. Again, we're codifying some of the things that we've done in the past. Just talks about withdrawals from the fund. A little further on in the report, it talks about how money gets into the capital stabilization fund. On page five, again, we're talking about OPEB and the ten percent increase from the previous year's appropriation, that's something we've done for the past three years already. And then additional contributions to the retirement system, if appropriate, it's just something else that, that we could spend some, some additional funding on. Bottom, page five, capital, again, this talks about the capital stabilization fund. Second bolded, second bolded item there is changes to some verbages that we had there about debt exclusions, kind of opening it up just a bit, to say unless an internal funding plan is developed, debt exclusion shouldn't be utilized from borrowing and so forth. Right now, we're limited to debt exclusions, but there were some members on the committee who wanted that a little bit more meaning, so that we put that in there.
So that's specifically in, in recent years, the track project, what we did with the snow and ice money, you know, gives that flexibility. For the fire station, if that comes before, when it comes before us for their next step, you know, using, making a, this board making a decision to use capital funds for that, so gives us that flexibility. Otherwise, we're going to increase taxes.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the final bullet there on page five is something we've done before with the snow and ice stuff, so. And finally, on page six, it's just policy reviews, codifying it that it needs to be looked at each year by both the Board of Selectmen and the Town Council Committee. There's more changes that the committee will be talking about over the next few months, but we wanted to get this policy in front of you before the budget season started, just so we have something to hold our hats on.
So how does the ratings, how does help our bond and things like that, will be providing improvement? I know that's one of the things that have helped us with our strong bond rating, is that we have some of these policies in place. Is there any of these changes recommended by any bonds?
Are they codifying what we're doing with the OPEB?
Yeah.
It's certainly going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May not reduce it, but at least it will, people know we're doing something with it.
Keep it strong.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, any other questions from the board?
There's great meetings, I must add.
Oh, I'll bet. How much coffee are you guys drinking, those things? All right, so we.
Want a motion?
Yep.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to receive the proposed amendments to the financial management policy, as proposed by the Financial Policies Working Group, and to schedule the adoption of said policy amendments to the Board of Selectmen's next regular meeting, October twenty-one, twenty thirteen?
Second.
Motion made in second, and to receive the proposed amendments to the financial management policy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I probably won't be here for that meeting, but have fun. Okay, thanks, Steve. You plan on coming back that night to talk about them, or?
Not sure.
You want to just?
After now.
All right.
It's the World Series or something.
Hey, hey, hey. Intermunicipal agreement, regional housing services.
They just tied it up.
We've already done this.
Yeah, Keith, do you really have anything, this is really just acting on, in accordance with a town meeting vote?
Yeah, town meeting appropriated fifteen thousand dollars from community preservation funds for the Regional Housing Service Office. That money looks like will last us about three years, under the contract that has been competitively bid through the town of Hudson, as the lead community for the five towns, working together on the regional housing effort, so.
All right, great. It's all yours.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter forty, section four A, to authorize execution of an intermunicipal agreement, IMA, with the towns of Hudson, Foxborough, Bolton, and Stowe, for the provision of Regional Housing Service Services Office, RHSO, consultant services, services subject to approval as to form by town council.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sure, you want to take a break? You want, ten minute recess?
No, the two minutes recess.
Two minute recess, okay.
Six minute recess.
Six minute? What do you need?
Six.
All right, go ahead.
Can we all take a break?
Yeah, I'm just going to check this off, and then we're going to go. I guess I have to.
Right, because we're not up till eleven.
Oh, no, we don't have to. No, there's something we can take. We can take this. And we can actually, I can even jump on that, because that's only a couple minutes. Want to recess, we'll take it.
Two minutes, two minutes.
I was curious, give the, your rules and regulations, a lot of paper.
I believe they're in the town code, but we don't.
Yeah, they're, they're online. It's two hundred and one pages. It's on, it's two hundred and one pages, the document, and it's online.
Some of your questions might be, may not be applicable once you hear the thing we're going to talk about. We're not really going to start talking about actual changes tonight, so.
Okay, do you have a copy of what's appropriate for annual town meeting, special town meeting?
Uh, we're in recess right now, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm asking a question.
No, there's no policy about, about what's appropriate for annual town meetings.
But didn't you in fact discuss how, you know, annual town meetings are for major events and sort of?
But there, there's no policy, there's nothing in the Selectmen's rules and regulations and policies that define what happens at a town meeting. There's not, there's no written policy that addresses the issue you raised.
I might find that in the minutes, because you did discuss that.
No, it didn't say we're going to talk about specifics.
I'm just trying to understand.
I don't know. We've had discussions with the Study Committee to increase voter participation.
I think right there, you had a discussion, was why it would be in the minutes after our Selectmen meeting.
I'm sure anything we discuss here is in the news. Over on TV. Yeah, so I refresh my memory by watching the video.
Absolutely.
You know, I enjoyed the meeting once, I missed the MacGyver in his special. Second edition. I can rarely bring myself to watch.
Your.
I try not to.
I think I want that one corrected.
Massachusetts. Yeah. If I do it, it's usually so that I have to give an assignment to someone who wasn't at the meeting, and say, watch it from, you know, one hour, twenty minutes.
You must ask.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
All right, Board of Selectmen is back in session.
Thank you.
Sticking, so let's just wait for that conflict of interest, let's see where that goes at eight forty-five. I just want to talk about the Selectmen's rules and regulations. This was one of our goals, so I'm just trying to get that process started, and the sections, obviously, I'll talk about. I probably divided it, gave me.
Sixty.
What's that? No, no, I'm looking for the sections. Keith, just switch out all my book. I had a divider in here. It gave me a divider, now it's all, I know.
There should be a yellow sheet with a divider.
I know, there it is, hold on. Further forward than that.
And you all have these notebooks, and about halfway through, it starts being the general bylaws, and starts being the policies.
So, so I'm talking about the policies, Selectmen's rules, regulations, and policies. I know there was some thoughts to changing some of these, so I wanted to know if anybody had any thoughts, or how we should go about this, if anybody had some recommendations on ones that they wanted to have changed.
I think that the, the goals pointed out two, that I can recall, not having the goals in front of me, the.
The code of conduct and the reorganization.
Part two, seven?
Mm-hmm. And I can't find the reorganization.
You mean after the election?
Yes.
That?
Reorganization procedure. It's a, it's a, it's in quick fix, actually.
Yeah.
What I perceive as a quick fix. What I think is a quick fix.
Yeah, yeah.
But I can't find it on this page.
Is it administrative policies and procedures of the board? Page forty-two.
Is that what it's under?
Yep.
So forty-two?
Page forty-two.
Section one, number one.
Yes, probably.
Forty-two. Yeah, section one, and what was the first, what was the other one?
The, section one, number seven.
Page sixty-six.
Seven, yes, all right. So we can start with those two, I'm going to skim through these, if I can get, stay away to the end of them, and see if there's any other ones that I, that I'd like to discuss, but I think if we can get to that point on this first, no, the second meeting in November.
Well, I think, Mr. Chair, if we could at least schedule a discussion as to, you know, pick whether it's number one or number seven, or any others that the board members may come up with, schedule it on a meeting, let's have a discussion about it, and maybe there is no changes, maybe there are some changes, and then, you know, probably take two meetings, want to talk about it, come about, come out with some codifications to these existing policies. Then we have to accept it, and then.
Public hearing, probably, right?
Yeah. No, you don't have to do a public hearing.
So.
I have one too that I want to.
Okay.
Did I mention it now?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Just on fourteen, I think, Alex and I had talked about this in the past, the policy and recognition and proclamations, and so we have a written policy that actually talks about who's getting.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Just we, it all started from a discussion of trying to find equitable ways of recognizing public service.
Yep.
And we, we don't know, we have, we do some things, we don't have anything that sort of guides us through.
Some kind of standards.
I want to look at, just now, pull it out now, noticing, policy on earth removable permits also. Let's see if that one needs any discussion.
Part one, eight?
Uh, three, four. Oh, this is part, oh, well, this one, which is three, four?
Okay, so that's issuing the permits, and over here, earth removal regulations.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's in the reg section, not in the policy section.
Right.
So, but this is where the yellow sheet is between part one and part two, right?
No.
No, it's between the town bylaws and your selectmen's.
It's right, it's right before this.
Yeah.
So, so this is all the regulations, policies, and then this is?
So, the first part of the.
This is the, this is table contents.
Yeah, the first part of that would have the regulations, the board's regulations. It would be followed by this board's policies.
Oh, in that second section.
In that, right.
Yeah, the reason this is so thin is because the zoning's done.
Yeah, division one of the town code booklet, division one of the bylaws passed by town meeting.
Oh, I see.
Division two are those things that the board of selectmen has approved.
Okay.
Which are a combination of regulations that you've adopted and policies that you've adopted.
Which can both be amended.
Right, so you're looking.
By board without town meeting.
So, you're looking at regulations, you're looking at.
Okay, so regulations is one through eleven.
Yeah, but specifically number eight, right?
Yes.
So, if I understand you by Keith, you're saying that from page one to page about two hundred, which is the second half of what Ted has in front of him, we can change by policy among the five of us with a majority vote?
Yes, by the selectmen's vote, you can change anything in this table of contents that's here.
I'm in word for it, I'll just.
Division, in, anything in division two is what's adopted by the select.
Part two.
Division, division one, the bylaws, is adopted by town meeting.
Yeah.
So, if, um, I can make a suggestion as to how to attack this.
Sure.
I mean, do you wanna, you wanna give us more time, or, I think, you know, we, we have a general consensus of the ones that we wanna go forward with. Start with part one, number eight, and just go down to part two, number one, and just hit them from there?
Yeah, I'd like to review.
Sure.
And come up with more, so I think in a meeting or two, um, we can come up with the ones that won.
Well, I think it's a, it can be a fluid document, we don't have to say, you know, let's, we have a starting point, go through the process, somebody may say, oh, hey, I want part two, number eleven, too, by the way.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
But to start, to kick this thing off, let's, if we wanna get something accomplished, let's start next meeting.
Okay.
Part one, section eight.
Okay.
Why not, you're having a hearing on earth removal.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and, um, again, I always say that I don't need to put subjects off, um, just because one person isn't here, um, I'm gonna miss that one. So, you want, I think, since this was something I brought up, I'd like to be here for it.
Section two, number one's fine, too?
No, I'm just saying, oh, do you wanna start?
That's fine.
I thought we were gonna delve into all of it, you wanna do one by one?
Why don't we plan to do one, seven, and fourteen in section two? All right, part two, section one, because those are the, those are the ones that risen to the surface, let's do those three.
Sure.
We'll hold off on eight.
At the next meeting?
Which ones?
Policies, part two, section one, we're gonna do number one, number seven, and number fourteen, or that's what's proposed.
Okay, and then we'll hold off.
At the next meeting.
And we'll hold off on part one, regulations eight, and part three, number four, because those are relative to earth removal.
Yeah, yeah.
Till when you can be.
Yeah, well, that's fine, yeah. And then, um, anytime, and then the other ones that people come up with.
All right.
So, one, two weeks from tonight, we're doing one, seven, seven, and fourteen.
Yes.
And I may be here, if I feel it's worth hiring a babysitter to do this.
What happened wrong?
Oh, we can put them in here, put them back, put them in the back. I don't really get people moving fast. All right.
Okay, so that's.
All right, thank you very much. So, um, next we have, um, a, an issue that we tabled that has to do with conflict of interest law and a special municipal employee determinations. Um, this is something that we've discussed, and what it is, is we, when we have, um, town employees who want to serve on boards. And in the past, that we've made, uh, separate distinctions for each member, and there's a few of them that have been listed here, um, and then what we were thinking about doing is to make all town positions special municipal employees. Keith, I'll turn over to you because that's, you guys speak more.
Yeah, you had, you had raised the question back in July, when we, we brought you the latestness in a series of individual requests for, um, special municipal employee designation. At the time, uh, the matter was, um, the park and recreation commission to deal with the fact that we have a full-time paid employee in another department who'd been elected to that commission, and then in order for them to be able to continue, continue to serve in the posts that they've been elected to, you would have to designate that elected board as a, uh, special municipal employee. Uh, you had done that twice before, um, in, in recent memory, once last December for the Board of Assessors, uh, when, uh, when a, one of the members of the, of that board was taking full-time position in a different department of the town. And previously, when a, um, another, a full-time town employee had been elected to yet another board, Board of Health, so in recent memory, you've had those three. The question came up during that discussion, why are we doing it piecemeal? Why are we just, why, why is the board only being brought recommendations to cure particular circumstances for, as they arose with particular boards, rather than have a general policy where, which applied to everyone? So, that's what started the conversation. We had an initial, uh, opinion letter from council, there were some questions that the board asked for in August about seeing what the pros and cons were. We also saw that the form of the motion, that if you, if you were going to adopt, uh, say, if you were going to designate all of, all of the boards and committees as special municipal employees, for example, that you, that the motion actually had to name each and every one. Uh, and so we have a, for your review, we have a list of the, uh, the town clerk is provided, uh, containing all of the, uh, elected and appointed boards. That actually came as an attachment, uh, arrived by email today, and we just did a quick body count that, to see where we have, that we have, we have four hundred and eleven of positions, on four hundred and eleven positions on elected boards and appointed boards in town, fifty-seven elected positions, three hundred and fifty-four appointed board positions. Of which, a hundred and twenty-two of those four hundred and eleven are already special municipal employees, so about one, you know, a quarter, a quarter.
Either by action or statute.
Yes, that there are, um, in, in some cases, in the case of the board of selectmen itself in a, in a town with a population of under ten thousand, the statute says the five of you as the selectmen in a, in a town with a under ten thousand population are special municipal employees by statute. Doesn't take any, doesn't, you don't have to vote it, it's, the legislature has already done it to you. Um, housing authority also, also has the same status, that they are special municipal employees by statute, and the cultural council is also, uh, also has that status. Any other special municipal employees so designated in Littleton are ones that have been designated by you, by your vote, and, uh, so the, I think the count was, uh, that we have seventeen that have been, uh, that are designated by statute, and the balance of that hundred and twenty-two have been by your vote. So, that's sort of where we are today, and Ted was here, and we've got his opinion letter on the, what the pros and cons are.
Okay. You have a floor?
Okay. Thank you, so, I want to introduce my associate, Margaret Reynolds, who is, um, our two sixty-eight eight expert. Um, she's here to help me answer the tough questions. And for the record, occasionally I will show up with someone, if there's ever two of us at a meeting, we only bill for one, because we're not trying to help you, but we're gonna, we wanna give you the best answer we can.
Well, I wanna thank you, because we didn't put this request out to have you here, so both of you, thank you for coming on short notice, I don't think we asked till about, what, two thirty?
Margaret's the closer.
Yeah, you'll see her jab me, and then the answer comes out. So.
Frank is dribbling.
So, just kind of a, a little preview on, on the letter and on, um, the ethics law in general. Um, so, the ethics law, you know, you think of it as kind of a net, and the net is meant to catch unethical behavior, or at least behavior that violates the conflict of interest law. I think Keith may have had the best clip. It's the conflicts of interest law and the Ethics Commission, but the Ethics Commission really is misnamed, because they're really just all about enforcing the conflict of interest law. So, as far as the conflicts of interest law is ethical, then they are the Ethics Commission. As far as not, they're not. Um, but in this instance, you know, the question is, what are the pros and cons of naming someone a special municipal board? And I don't, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all answer. I can tell you that in the town of Stockbridge, where we are also town councilor, there's just a little north of two thousand people, most of their eligible positions are special municipal employees, because in a town of that size, it would be difficult for them to operate without people holding two positions. The guy that does the snow plowing is on the conservation commission, and on and on. We know that, once this town reaches ten thousand, you got, this board is no longer special municipal employee, so, I don't know if ten thousand is the right number, but I know the conflict of interest law thinks that once you hit ten thousand, you're starting to get enough citizens.
You're not special anymore.
You're just ordinary.
Yeah, you're regular, you're regular municipal employees. Doesn't mean you can't name other boards, but you no longer have the option. So, as you look at it, I think the question you're, you're, you need to answer is, is Littleton of a sufficient size that it can staff all its positions without a lot of overlap? Or are you of a sufficient size that you need some overlap to, to staff all your positions? So, I, I guess I don't look at it as a right and wrong answer, I think there's, there's, there's a number, and, and either you can or you can't, and I think that's, you all may have a different opinion on.
Well, I think that's, that's one question to answer, I think the other question is, do we wanna have an impediment to allow people to volunteer? That's, yours is more on, well, that's on legal, it's also, mine is, do we wanna open this up and allow as many people to volunteer as possible, or do we wanna put up barriers to letting people who happen to be employees volunteer in the town?
I'm not sure impediment is the correct word to use, though.
Okay, I, I chose to use it, you can use a different word, but that's the one I use. Um, so, that's, in addition to your question, that's the one that I have.
Right, well, so what's the difference? And that, you know, there's, because there are so many exemptions, you know, the rule is this, and then we've got ten exemptions.
Yeah.
I can't capture them all, so I can give you, give you the, the general view, and that is, a special municipal employee can act as an agent or attorney for someone else before a town board, and a regular municipal employee can't. So, there's a number of, you know, you can think of a number of different examples. Someone serving on the conservation commission who is an engineer cannot represent anyone in this town before the Board of Health. An engineer on a board that are special municipal employees can do that. You know, so it's, I think the obvious examples are engineers and attorneys, um, maybe the less obvious examples are landscapers, contractors, you know, a contractor might take on the task of going to get someone a special permit, or, um, an order of conditions or that sort of thing. So, in that, in, in the one instance, if you want to say, listen, if you're serving on a town board, we don't want you appearing before any other board, you should not designate whatever position as a special municipal employee. If you're comfortable with that, you know, it, as you say, it's going to, you're going to expand your pool, you're going to get people that are professionals in town that you may want serving on town boards. The other, um, kind of general example is, you're not supposed to have an interest in a contract that the town has an interest in. So, again, member of the conservation commission, they are not special municipal employees. The town needs someone to help review septic plans, um, for the Board of Health and puts out a contract.
And the contract includes employment contracts.
Yeah, and it is, it is kind of, more often than not, the kind of contract we're talking about. Um, in that instance, that member of the cons comm can't work for the board of health reviewing septic plants. Special municipal employee could. In another instance, um, a special municipal employee could take employment, as, as long as it's of a certain kind. A member of the Board of Health can work for the town in some capacity if they're special, as long as the, the employment he has has no overlap with his official position. A special municipal employee can take a job with his own agency if the selectmen give him a waiver. A regular municipal employee can't take either work, they can't, they can't have an interest in a contract in another agency or in another agency. So, those are the, those are kind of the, the section seventeen and section twenty examples. Uh, section seventeen is agents, section twenty is interest in a contract. Those are the classic ones we're talking about, like we're talking about special municipal.
Could I just make a, sort of a syntactical point here?
Yeah.
It is the case that these folks that we would be designating special municipal employees are in fact not employed in sort of the conventional way we think of employment. None of us who sit here get paid a nickel for what we do.
Right.
And folks who serve as elected officials, almost all of them get no payment for their work, and certainly the board members who are on all the boards that we have, they're not getting paid for their work. So, it's sort of a funny term to use employee, when in fact it should perhaps be special municipal servant. No, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that in a sort of cheeky way, I mean that quite literally.
Right.
Because you hear employee and you think that money's being exchanged, so when you have a municipal employee who in fact gets a paycheck from our town, it's a much different flavor than it is talking about these special municipal servants.
But the conflict of interest law doesn't make such a distinction.
Sure.
No, I think it's a, it's a good point, I just think, can't change the law.
Right, and, and it's fair to say, one of the exemptions, you can hold as many unpaid elected or appointed positions as you like. So, someone who, who gets no pay from the town can serve on every board.
After they do one, they wouldn't do many.
But it's, it's when you throw in that one paid position that you get in trouble.
Right, right.
Jim?
I guess, um, you know, the, the, the previous discussions we had, it was, well, why don't we just broad brush this thing right across the board and make everybody? Um, you know, we've been doing it case by case basis, I don't, I don't think there's been any issues with it. I think it's, um, good for us to have, uh, when those cases come before us, we can have some type of dialogue, talk about it, and say, thank you for your service, and say, okay, let's do this, make this designation for this particular board. You know?
You'd like to leave it as is?
I'd just leave it as is, I, I don't, I don't know whether or not, um, um, it's gonna hurt anything, you know, either or, I mean, you know, you, the, the law itself is so loose, I guess, um.
Yeah, I wonder if Tom could clarify that, in fact, there's, there's, there's two actions that the selectmen often take when dealing, when dealing with some of these situations. One is whether to designate the position as a special municipal employee, and then the other is to grant the exemption, or the, the waiver request or whatever.
Right.
To make the determination based on a disposition or request that, that's been made, so maybe there's a, two, that if someone has an actual, what might be viewed as an actual financial interest, that, that the, either the appointing authority or the board of selectmen still has to rule on that.
Right, so.
So, so, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, and you, you, that's, you raise an important point, and that is, we, we don't designate, if, we don't, an employee doesn't get the designation, a position gets the designation.
Right.
So, it's a member of the conservation commission, not Jim Jones.
Or not Teacher X, or.
Not any one, it's all, it's all of the members of that.
Right, and so if, if you wanna do Teacher X, then every similarly situated teacher, you know, that's in kind of the same.
Yeah.
Uh, cross-section of teacher as that person, needs to get the same designation.
I was just using that as employee, I didn't wanna say police, I, I was, I was gonna say it applies to T, but yeah, I did, police came to mind, I was trying to think something else, but it's different, so it doesn't apply to the, right, the paid position applies to the volunteer position.
And the paid position is a part-time position, so it needs to be less than five hundred hours.
No, no, that's.
I'm sorry, that, okay.
Okay, so for the sake of argument, I'm gonna use someone who's retiring soon as the example, let's say Chief Kelly.
Okay.
Employed by the town as a full-time employee.
Right.
Ran for Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Back last May, and he were sitting here right now. Would he be permitted to sit in executive session on the police contract? Would he be permitted to make decisions about that? He would need to recuse himself.
Yes.
From those discussions, despite the fact that he's a special municipal employee sitting.
Yeah.
He has a different section.
It doesn't waive.
Different section of law, okay.
S and E, or special municipal employee status doesn't waive any other section.
Yeah.
Other than seventeen and twenty. Seventeen, acting as an agent, twenty, interest in a contract.
Right.
If you have a conflict, you still have a conflict, and you still need to reduce.
So, a municipal employee ever has a financial interest in anything, they can never act on that matter. Yes. Ever, even if they're special, it doesn't matter. Thank you.
You had mentioned the, the law being loose, it's not, it's not well-written, and you talked about seventeen, um, it was on the test that I took in, in June for the ethics, I get to take periodic, I still remember question number nine, says, um, you, you're on the conservation commission, and, um, you have an elderly neighbor next door, the elderly neighbor is having trouble getting into the housing authority housing, and you are, they have no relatives, they come to you and ask advice, they want you to go before the housing authority, uh, and to act as an agent to help them get in. You can't do it unless you're a special municipal employee. And then the second part on, on twenty, and, and this is my opinion, I think we take our town employees who are getting paychecks, and if we don't make them special municipal employees, that's almost making them a, a second rate person, because we, because now you're saying, we work for the town, but we don't trust you to be on the board. And that, that bothers the heck out of me, because you have so many talented people that could be doing that. And that's why, and why it was written in certain ways, it's like that, but I think you're throwing out people that are, that have talent who've, or you could be doing that by doing it.
I am, either way, I think, I think we would raise some ire, and there is maybe, I don't know, the, the perception that there would be some, the possibility of conflict
I don't know, the perception that there would be some, the possibility of conflict of interest if we designated everybody. So I'm okay going either, either way, I guess. But maybe it's something, do we want to develop a policy to give the board guidance?
Just the laws already written, why would we need a law to do the policy to implement the law?
Well, I would just say, just say that, you know, when this comes up, the Board of Selectmen will review it on a case-by-case basis, I don't know. There's something to think about.
And that's what we've been doing.
Right, just how that's been, that's been the practice. And then the practice was, was just, it was just questioned, of why are we doing it one at a time?
Yeah.
And, and.
But just so that this doesn't come up every year, every two years, if we were to put it into code, do at least some guidance, but that's just a thought for later.
The other, there are probably two prompts, three prompts for when it might come up. One is when someone gets elected, someone who happens to be town employee, gets elected to an unpaid board, and, I mean, sometimes that happens on a write-in, right? And you don't know until, until the results are read, ooh, you know, someone didn't take our nomination papers or someone, something. So occasionally, we'll, we'll know, but there's no policy that goes out advising town employees that, well, if you are thinking of running for elected office, realize that when you get elected, you need to, you need to deal with a determination by this board, or else you'll have to give up either your elected office or your paid job.
Yeah, so I think.
So some, so some forewarning of that might be helpful to prospective candidates, so.
And there's a, there's a correction to that one.
Okay.
So, and I'll let, so if you're a municipal employee, you can run for elected office, but you can't, so the difference is the appointed. You can't, you can't take a municipal employee and appoint them to a position, paid position, without them being special employees.
Oh, say that again?
Yeah, you listen.
Okay, so.
Because we've had three, well, we've done it three times for elected offices.
Right, but in that instance, so the difference, so the difference is, if you're in the elected office first.
Yeah.
Then you can't take on the employment contract. And those, so that was the.
So I can't go work for the police, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Oh, you're disappointed.
But that wasn't going to happen.
I don't think so.
So, in a few of those instances, the person was elected first, and then the law says, oh, you're using your elected position to get this employment contract.
Okay.
We're not going to let that happen unless the selectmen weigh in. In the instance where you have the employment contract, you can run for elected office, and that's okay, but you can't be appointed to a board, right?
Well, we've made a mistake then.
Well, then, on three, on three other terms that we've asked for advice from town council on, for Board of Health, Board of Assessors, and Park and Rec Commission, that the problem was identified as one that could only be cured by a special municipal.
But those were all elected.
But on the case of the Board of Health.
Two of them, two of them were prior office holders.
Before taking on the employment.
And the third was elect, was a board member first, so, in any event.
So we'll get down to Alex. Yeah, I think, we haven't got Alex yet. Do you have anything to add, Alex, or any questions?
What does that look for?
No, I, I'm sitting here listening to all these explanations, and, and, you know, everybody knows, I know this stuff pretty well. I'm not at your level, but I know it pretty well. And yet, it's still sort of going back and forth and back and forth without a high level of understanding. So let me ask a question, because we did this, we did this in several occasions. If somebody comes to the Board of Selectmen, and they say, I want to belong on a committee, and there's a potential for a financial interest, or, you know, I need a determination whether there's a conflict of interest. How does that play off of the special municipal employee status? In other words, you just made the statement that if somebody has a financial interest, that's it, they're done, they can't do it.
They can't act on that matter, that's correct.
Okay.
Under Section 19, correct.
But we have made determinations as a Board of Selectmen, that it is not so substantial as.
For appointed.
Okay? And we don't have a policy about that, we're just saying, okay, we think it's okay. And so, so that's in play here, and also the special municipal employee, and what isn't clear is, is, okay, where is the line really being drawn here? And, and does special municipal employee help us ensure that we have people who are not getting caught up in financial interests or in things that they shouldn't, that are not in the best interest of the town or the town's people? I think that's why we all want to do this. And that's where I'm having a little trouble with this. I mean, I understand where it is, but I'm, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure what they're.
So I just want to clarify a point that I made to you before about Section 19, you can't act on a matter, and actually, particularly talking about, the Board of Selectmen couldn't act on a matter where a member has a financial interest, because you're elected. If you're appointed, then you, the Board of Selectmen can grant an exemption, and that's what Mr. McGurty was talking about. And that's a judgment call on the part of the Board of Selectmen. Now, special municipal employees are, that designation doesn't affect that process of the board making that judgment call on whether an individual appointed employee is able to carry out their duties with a financial interest in a particular matter. So that, the interplay is that you will always have that authority to make, to decide whether to grant an appointed municipal employee that exemption, regardless of whether they're a special or regular municipal employee.
So what limitations are there in that? Could we directly say to somebody, well, we understand that there's, you know, that you have plus or minus $100,000 interest here, or something like that, but we think it's all right? You think that this board can go that far when it says not so substantial as in, in making that individual determination?
So, so in your scenario, someone has $100,000.
I'm just throwing it to use a number. Eight. Something, yeah.
I do, the law says you have discretion.
The Selectmen, a separate, a third, a third party has that discretion.
But that's, that, that has to do with, I think, Section 19.
Correct.
So that's not, that special municipal employee status doesn't affect.
Correct, correct. So it's two different things we're talking about when we start talking about special municipal employees, and the contracting, and the financial ability or piece, so I guess.
But this is where it gets confused.
No, it really doesn't, because, you know, if you're talking about somebody that has a financial interest, that's Section 19. If you're talking about somebody that is a special employee, municipal employee, that may be a employee of the town that's either appointed or elected to a particular committee, that's the designation.
Who can now act as an agent?
Well, that's, that's, that's okay, that's okay. Act doesn't act, not, not in a financial interest.
So here's where I'm at on this. I think we, we, I don't know, I don't know where I'm at. Here's where I think we are. I think we all agree that there needs to be, we need, well, I can't say that. I shouldn't say that, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I'm at, I think we need to, we need to keep the option open. I think we don't want to restrict it. I don't think anybody's here to restrict, I don't think it's here to restrict it. I don't want to restrict it. I think going on a case-by-case basis, but I want to send a message, or post a message, and I think maybe, again, going back to regulations we can talk about later, but I think there should be a message to residents who may be employees, that they're welcome to apply for boards and run for boards, and, but that they be aware that it should be, you know, it has to be, go through the review of the conflict of interest on the special municipal employee. Did I confuse you? You're almost looking in glazed eyes.
The second part.
Well, I just, I want to make sure that the residents know, residents who are employees know that they're welcome to on boards, but they're subject to some sort of review.
So, sorry, so a question that kind of brings this up. We have an employee at the Highway Department that wants to run for the Board of Health, okay? Highway Department, you're an employee, or maybe not, that's a good one, let's run for the Conservation Commission, all right? So they're an employee, does that individual need special municipal employee designation if they get elected to the Conservation Commission?
That sounds like a good question.
What's that? An elected?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So if they want to get one.
I think what you're making is you're adding an unpaid position.
Correct.
Those boards are unpaid.
Correct.
So there's a recent regulation, and I apologize, I think it is 930 CMR 6023, and there's a disclosure, there's always a disclosure form, there's a disclosure form just to, you know, to make sure that everyone's clear, that the second position's not paid.
Okay.
And there's no conflict of interest.
Okay, so.
So there, there is a provision that addresses exactly that situation.
Okay, so let's, let's say a town employee wants to run for the Park and Rec, gets appointed or elected to the Park and Rec. Town employee, what designation does that individual need?
They don't need any designation, because they're starting.
There you go. That's the answer I wanted to hear. So we don't need to designate an employee that gets elected to any particular position, an elected position in town, as a special municipal employee?
Elected.
Elected, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the vote that we took.
There we go.
Back in June should be nullified. Let's say we had a full-time police officer who ran for office in one election. He does not have to come before this board and ask to become a special municipal employee with respect to the board that he was elected to serve on.
No, not for the, because if, he was elected for the position after he was elected.
Again, okay, meaning what we did, we shouldn't have done.
It's unnecessary.
And I'm sharing with council this opinion.
I'm reading that, but I don't, there was layers here.
Okay.
Yeah, but more too, I mean, if it's A and B, then.
So the elected board is okay, but the appointed board, last year, before the adoption of this regulation.
Right.
Was not okay.
Okay, that, that is a recent development.
So we needed to declare those positions as special municipal employees.
None of them are elected.
Wasn't appointed, it was an elected position.
The Board of Health was elected position, PMBC was appointed.
Oh, PMBC, okay.
MBTA Advisory Committee was appointed, and Study Committee to Increase Board of Participation was appointed.
I got you.
Was appointed. So those all.
Needed to be fixed.
Yeah, kind of ruined his contract, his employment contract.
Okay.
I see a few SMEs here. Would anybody like to speak?
SMEs, SMEs.
I just think the biggest difference is, is dollars. And as Jenna said earlier, when you get on an appointed board, you do not get paid. You give up hours and hours and hours of your time to do better for this town, and that's the reason you get on the board. You don't do it for financial gain, you do it because you choose to make this town a better.
So, are we, what do we have, what are your thoughts? Keep it as is?
Based on the law, based on the law, and I think the conversations that we've had previously, if an employee was elected to a, my understanding was, if an employee that got elected to a position, we had to make it SME. That was the original understanding that I had.
That's what we thought.
Right.
So that was the opinion you heard.
So that's, that, that, that is not, okay, I got you.
It's misleading opinion.
Okay, so.
Do we get a refund?
You don't.
So, 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 you know, and, and there's a whole different category of stuff when you start talking about contracts and financial benefits. If I'm that Highway person that's elected to the Board of Health, and I want to.
That would matter, that would matter.
Well, if I have a contract with the town to go out, review, whatever, I get that. So money and contracts are different, employment, but if I'm on an elected position, and I become a town employee, that's an issue.
You can't.
That's to be brushed, correct.
Right, you just told me I can't become a police officer while I'm sitting on the board. I think there's a waiting period as well.
It's all elected first.
Right, right. I'm good.
Are we good? Everybody's good?
I'm good.
So do we fix any votes that we?
Was there any harm in taking the votes that we took?
I think you needed to.
No, there's no, there's no harm.
I think you needed to at the time.
But we didn't need to in July with respect to our full-time-employed police officer who was elected to Park and Rec.
No.
Which means Park and Rec elected members should not be designated special municipal employees, any of them. That whole designation should be quashed.
It doesn't need to be there, right?
So should we bother rescinding it? I don't know.
They're transcended, and, and the person who's serving there, who's not a, who is a full-time employee, and then was elected afterwards.
It's okay.
Still safe.
Yeah, he's safe.
Okay. Council, board's good?
I'm good.
Board's good? All right. So we're keeping it, just no changes?
No, no need for changes, I don't think. Keep it as is.
All right.
Yeah, there's some questions here.
Yeah, we've, the board said they're good, so. The board said, no, I'm sorry, Mr. McGuyver, you understand open meeting law, if you'd please obey it, I'd appreciate it. So the board's good? Should we go to then?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors.
Sorry for that.
All right, thanks. Minutes, I see minutes, a minute.
Sorry, I omitted them by accident.